Okay, have we let the public in?
I believe yes.
Okay, a call to order the Malibu Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting of July 20th, 2020. Where does it time go? I have my little script to read here. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The planning commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You'll only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak, under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. Recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Uring?
John, you must be muted.
Here, here.
Commissioner Wild?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, on the approval of the agenda, we've got two items, 5B and 5D, which have asked for continuances. John, you want to do the honors on this?
Okay, do you have report on posting first or not? Okay, I move that 5D be continued to Bonnie. I don't know when and 5D to be continued to, I don't know when.
5D was a date uncertain, I think.
Richard's gonna clear this out.
Yes, let me get, I want to get for you the item numbers. So we were also going to add to that list of continuing item 3B for the de minimis waiver. The applicant for that one, also the homeowner, has to do a redesign because of some issues with obtaining the the home they were going to previously put on the property. It was going to be a prefabricated structure. So they're redesigning and we have to continue that so we could get, obviously get the new design. And then on item 5C, or excuse me, 5D would be continued to a date uncertain so that we can have the neighbor and the homeowner work together to resolve their issues. And on 5B, we are going to work to respond to the coastal commission's comments. And I was talking to the case planner and it looks like we're asking for the first meeting in September, which would be September 8th, so that we can prepare a amended report to respond to that coastal commission letter.
Can you list all the continuances and whether to a date uncertain or a certain date? Do you mind listing those, all three?
Certainly. So item 5B would be to a date certain, and that would be September 8th. Item, items 5D and 3B4 would be a date uncertain.
That's your motion, John?
That's my motion.
I'll second. And is that to approve the rest of the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
All right, let's take the roll call, John.
Yes.
I guess I should have Kathleen do this. I'm sorry, Kathleen, call the roll, please.
That's okay. Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Kathleen, we have the report on the posting of the agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 9th, 2020, with the amended agenda posted on July 16th, 2020.
Thank you. That takes us to item two, written in oral communications from the public. Do we have any, these are all items not on our agenda. Do we have any speakers, Kathleen?
We do not.
Okay, now it takes us to item 2B, planning commission and staff comments and inquiries. Commissioners, who would like to start? Yeah, you want to go?
I'll wait for somebody else. I gotta get ready.
Okay, Steve, you want to go?
Yeah, I got, let me do two and I want to come back and do one after John's talks. Trevor, and this is, I got the agenda or the staff report for the short-term rentals and I just, one question. I think it looks pretty good. There's a statement on page three that says, you know, you've incorporated the features from the Santa Monica ordinance to achieve Melville goals, and you identified the things that you adapted. Am I to assume that everything else in the Santa Monica ordinance has been recorded in our resolution? Or are there things that you left out that aren't in here that were in Santa Monica? And what I'm trying to do is figure out what kind of work I got to do before the meeting. Because the city council said copy Santa Monica, so I assume that this thing reflects everything Santa Monica had with whatever revisions you put in for wording changes to make it adaptable to Malibu. Is that what happened?
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, Santa Monica has a different ordinance and a different municipal code and they use different terms, so it's different here. So the points that, you know, the home sharing portion is, is the primary focus of what the council wanted there. So that was brought over with the changes that the council directed for that. I mean, it can't mirror exactly, you know, what's in the Santa Monica ordinance, but staff's, you know, gone through it and tried to pull out all the substantive parts of it that would make sense into the
Were there were parts left out? Were there parts left out?
I mean, I know you got my parts left out. I mean, it's not word for word because it couldn't be word.
No, I mean, I just remember in Santa Monica, there was something about if you had one, if you were one of the timeshare websites and there was a request, you had to pull the site down within seven days. And that was in Santa Monica and I didn't see it here.
I'm not, I'm not sure which part you were talking about here. If you want to take this up, we can talk, we can talk about it, you know.
Here's the question. The question is, did you reflect everything in, inside this ordinance that was in the Santa Monica ordinance? Assuming word changes, whatever, that all the relevant things are also included in here? Is that a fair assessment? Or if not, how do I find out the things that were excluded?
I'm not sure what you would say is excluded. We took the direction of the council. We've done our best job to integrate the Santa Monica ordinance into the city's ordinance. So that's what we've
I'm just asking, you did it. So I'm just wondering, did you leave anything out?
It wasn't just me. This is, you know, staff working together here, so.
You and the staff leave anything out? I'm just looking, I'm just trying to make my life easier. I'm gonna review this thing.
Yeah, I don't know. The staff said it's best to integrate the Santa Monica ordinance per the direction of the council. So, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, what you think would be, would be missing from it.
Okay, if I go back and find something that's missing, I will get a hold of you. And if it's missing and it should have been in, then I'm going to also ask you to give me a list of anything else that might be missing, so.
You've got nine days between now.
Let me know if there's things in there that you'd like to see into the Malibu ordinance.
I want to just make sure that everything in Santa Monica, the staff, city council said copy Santa Monica. I just want to make sure we did that. That's all I'm trying to do.
It's not like the council said, you know, there's different parts of the, you know, the Volta family is different from Santa Monica. They wanted to bring the home sharing in.
All I'm asking is to identify those things that were different. I just want to understand what is or isn't it? That's all I'm trying to do.
And we're not going to dissolve that, we're not going to solve that tonight. You've got nine days between now and the meeting in order to take it up with Trevor or whoever else you want to talk to about it, John.
Happy to pick it up.
Is, is the Santa Monica ordinance very long?
It was included as part of Michael Lustig's attachments to, that were submitted to the city council. He, as I assumed that you both had read that since you're in close contact with him, but he went through line by line. We met with him. We included all of the things that made sense you include in our ordinance. There were things that didn't make sense. I can't tell you what they were right off the top of my head, but it's easy to go line by line.
Oh, that's not my reason I asked that. Then could you, if that's got the ordinance in it, can you send it to all of us so we can just look at it and know what we're looking at? Or where can we find the Santa Monica ordinance?
We have a whole webpage called malibu city.org/str, and it includes the Santa Monica ordinance and all of the
I need to know. Thank you.
So far.
Okay, any other comments? David? Chris?
Yeah, I think there is a public speaker. Can we double check if there is anyone that wanted to speak on item 2A?
We haven't gotten on 2A.
You know, on the
Excuse me, Chair. Actually, I just got a call from Mr. Craig Hill that he felt he's signed up for 2A, but yet had not, it did not appear on my screen, so.
Okay, fine. Why don't we, if, can you find him now? There he is, I see him. Why don't you unmute him so we can hear from Mr. Hill?
Oh, actually, actually, I also show now Chris Marks as public.
Yeah, I done that just because I didn't have the link, so you can neglect that one.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm here. That was weird. Two things. Regarding the council's decision in the two-thirds rule last week and as it pertains to future decisions, the council was bamboozled by all the talk of TDSF. The two-thirds rule does not mention TDSF. It references floor area. The TDSF that staff points to is in the previous clause about a different idea, namely that you can't increase your allowable TDSF just by adding a second story. Then the two-thirds rule is in the next clause, different clause, different idea, different standard of measurement. Regardless, as staff admitted in its report, the policy to use TDSF as for the, for the two-thirds rule was never implemented. The council somehow missed that gigantic subtlety, and staff should have clarified that the 2008 memo shown on screen pointed to a potential policy. As for that particular house, I don't know how anyone could look at it and already as big as it was on top as on the bottom and not see that it was already in violation of the rule. Secondly, a few thoughts on permits and compliance, just to stir the pot. This is a legislative matter for council, but you'll be among those who can best inform them as we look ahead beyond the next few big items. The commission has been seeing too many projects where an after-the-fact permit is requested for bootleg work. There are two of these on tonight's agenda. If there's to be any meaning to the requirement of getting a permit, there must be consequences for not getting one. On another hand, and I don't assume there are only two hands, I have a friend who just bought a house that had minor damage in the Woolsey fire. The prior owner paid $1,200 in permits just to replace some windows and repair some damage to the roof. That work is basic maintenance and should be considered just part of owning a house. You're not asking to increase your fixture count or affect anyone's view or neighborhood character. It wasn't even something like electrical for which the licensed pro is required. The price of a permit should not be so high that there's an incentive not to get one. It should be commensurate with the scope of work. A permit for something like repairing a window should be cheaper. A key point is that fees and fines should be tailored to encourage optimal behavior, not just to be based reflectively on, reflexively on staff cost. A permit for some repair shouldn't cost $1,000 because that's what the staff cost is. It should be set to encourage compliance, so maybe it's $200. Then more people will actually pay for permits. Meanwhile, at the high end, maybe permits for a 10,000 square foot house should cost more. Some staff costs can be recouped through fines for non-compliance. And if someone wants to legitimize bootleg work after the fact, they should pay an additional premium on top of what the permit would have cost in the first place. Fees should be set to drive behavior. Then whatever salary costs remain should be paid by taxes and those other fees, because the city works for all of us. In the end, permits must be enforceable, or else what's the point? I hear horror stories about non-responsive code enforcement, and I'm currently experiencing one myself. So council should soon agendize revamping the whole regime of permits and compliance, and I hope you guys will start talking and thinking about that in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. We're back now to item four, 2B, rather. The commission comments and inquiries. Anybody else? John?
Yeah, first, I'm going to bring this up every meeting. We're now back in business, sort of, as a city. And we have traffic again. I learned this weekend that it's impenetrable traffic. And I know we've closed our restaurants for inside service, but I see absolutely no progress at all on Nobu's six-year violation of their CUP. And I know we got told at one of these meetings, oh, we're not in charge, but we are. We asked for a revocation hearing two years ago. And we got told by the Public Works Commission they were going to be yellow paddles, Public Works Director. There aren't. So I'm asking why nothing is being done on our most dangerous traffic situation in Malibu? And I hope we can agendize that. Now, another thing that came up last week, one of the city council members came after us. Maybe not all of us, but they came after us for quote usurping our power and making up rules and et cetera, et cetera. And we were told that they made the rules, we didn't, even though, as Craig Hill just said, they were totally misinformed. Unfortunately, it was a planning, ex-planning commissioner who should have known better. He does not, and that we do not work for the planning, the city council. We work directly for whoever appoints us, and we work as a legal process as a check against politicians. Ordinances are made, they're reviewed by the planning commission, they're, they're approved by the city council, they're approved by the coastal commission. They are not made by the city council and they're not, not, and they can't pull them out of their hat. Now, I, as far as I'm concerned, they made a mistake last week on their interpretation. That's their right. But their right is not to base their, and they also made, he also made the assertion that we base, should base our opinions on how popular the project is in the neighborhood, which is totally crazy as far as I'm concerned. So I, I was very disappointed that some two-bit politician is going to lecture me on him trying to cover for his cronies, and that's essentially what it is. And he got a majority? Fine, I can live with that. But to have him claim that we're not doing our job and we're going outside of what's assigned by law is, by the way, the city council can't fire me, period, okay? He doesn't rule me. And, and I'm going to go on my ethics and I'm going to go on what the ordinances say in my interpretation. And it's too bad that he doesn't get his way all the time and he can't make ordinances. And he should listen to the law rather than his cronies. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Steve?
Yeah, I've got just two other items. I want to go back to the Nobu thing. Bonnie, last meeting we had, which was way before the last the city manager was coming up with a plan to deal with Nobu. How's that plan coming?
Richard is going to respond to that. I didn't know if you wanted us to respond to all of your comments at once, or if you want Richard to talk about it now, he can do that.
I just, I mean, Nobu, I'm just wondering where we are with the plan to get this thing fixed. Richard?
The Public Works Department is working with Caltrans about the intersection and that ties into preventing turns. The paddles were a concern because it might move traffic just further down the way to make U-turns. So they wanted to try to solve it without actually pushing the problem further down the highway. But we did have a meeting with the Nobu management and Soho management roughly about three, maybe four weeks ago. And the city manager did lead that meeting, and what came of that is not only to continue working with Caltrans, we're going to have an upcoming meeting with their valet operators to lock down a plan to address the valet circulation as well as ride-sharing vehicles that were causing an issue. And the other item that came from that too is that Nobu is looking at hiring a deputy on the weekends or during those high-volume periods where we have traffic problems on PCH, so that there would be a sheriff present to get traffic to move and force people not to wait on the highway if the lot is full. So there is some progress being made. Needless to say, as you could probably expect, what we're hearing from Nobu, obviously, is that with all of the COVID requirements and the closures of restaurants, because they can't have the indoor seating, they're of course citing a concern of cost and also is it really warranted at this point since they're only operating at about half capacity? But we are still working with them regardless of those reasons.
Okay, just If I can just have one other item that we, that has been put in place already, and that is that the, there are, there's a designated area along PCH of parking spaces that in the evening hours, when the volume is the highest between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m., that has been designated for rideshare pickup and drop-off. And we're seeing improvements in traffic flow based on that because rideshare is not, you know, sitting in the parking lot while the biggest problem is with the drivers that come to pick people up and they're waiting for the customers to come out. And so that has been relocated to outside of the parking lot and is helping to improve traffic flow.
Okay, just two, two questions to help assert my expectations as this plan comes down the road. And I, I get called by some people this week again who live next to Nobu, and the Nobu employees are parking on PCH and taking up parking spaces there that the residents would like to be able to use to get in their houses. Is the plan the city manager is coming up with going to deal with that issue?
There've been a number of strategies discussed, and one of them, it was involved a pilot program to use an off-site parking location for restaurant employees that the owners could then pay the cost of shuttling back and forth. That would help relieve some of the pressure on the public parking on PCH. COVID kind of derailed that plan at this time because there's not the financial wherewithal on the part of the restaurants to try something, to add expenses to their operations right now. But that is something that they were willing to embrace and try out to address that problem, and the city was open to cooperating because we discussed, not just in this location, but other areas along the highway, some sort of off-site employee parking program could, with shuttle service, could help with this whole issue.
So it may not be in this plan, but it's on the table someplace?
Yes.
Okay, second one was the joint parking use agreement that we had with Nobu. Basically, when it was developed, the legal staff left the city out of that agreement. And my understanding, that's been part of the problem we've had in trying to regulate the parking over there. Is that going to be resolved in your plan you guys are working on?
We're working on the whole package of issues about this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, my expectation is what we're going to be able to get fixed when this is, when you guys get through with your plan. So I'm just wondering, is that part of it?
An updated parking agreement is all part of this, yes.
Okay, cool. All right, Jeff, I got one last thing. And then I'll go, I, I just want to briefly comment on the testosterone attack that Mikey Pearson suffered at last week's city council meeting. First of all, the planning commission is not making up new rules. The decisions I make are based upon the language in the municipal code, the LIP and the general plan. Now, Mikey may not like how I interpret these rules, but then I can make the same statement about some of the decisions he's made on the city council. So in the eyes of the mutual admiration society, we're even. His claim that questionable issues should be brought to the council where they can be corrected is a bit disingenuous. Mikey and the council directed the planning commission to take a look at the TDSF rules. We did that. And we presented the council with a detailed study. Instead of looking at that report and clarifying the issue, Mikey used his 10 minutes of council comments to grovel and apologize to Don Schmitz for even coming up with the issue. I think that everyone who saw that agreed that Mikey lost a few vertebrae with that response. Mikey's new rule that planning commissions should make decisions based upon the number of friends the applicant has supports our rotating mayor program. We don't want to leave them in place too long to do too much damage. Bottom line, if Mikey or any other city council members have a problem with the way I'm voting, call me up and let me know. If you can demonstrate I'm wrong, I'll correct it. Conducting that discussion in a public forum is not my preferred method of communication, but if that's the council's pleasure, I'll play. Back, Jeff, to you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to council comments in a minute. I, I, I understand that the, the, the whole business that happened at the last council meeting might it be considered unusual, extraordinary? But just as, as a, as we move forward during what remains of and moves closer to an election, I hope we can put this aside, try to focus on the business that we're supposed to be focusing on and leave Malibu politics to some other forum. Now, come on, John, just let's, let's drop it.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about that, okay? The most important thing to say tonight is to congratulate Bonnie on her retirement from Malibu and thank her for years and years of listening to us and having to deal with us and having to deal with a lot of, a lot of people. And so I really appreciate her service. Thank you.
I agree. Thanks, John.
Second item.
Third.
Yes, I want to add to that, that Bonnie, you've done a job under this most stressful and unusual, difficult conditions, and congratulations on what you've accomplished and best of luck to you in the future, wherever, I guess if you're going back to Florida is what I heard. And now, over to you.
I did, I did want to, I didn't have a chance to comment, I only kind of introduced.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, no, I, I just want to add, just, I think what most of all I think we need as a community is as much public discussion as possible. I think there's been a number of times we've come close to getting topics covered and then we kind of back away. So as long as we as a community can just get through a lot of these things and actually get the public conversation to be had, I think we'll get passed out of this. So that's just my kind of blanket observation. And again, Bonnie, congrats and good luck in Florida.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate the heart and soul everybody puts into everything they do on this commission. I know it means, the work is difficult and I know it means a lot to everyone, and that's why all of us, including staff sometimes, get intense about things, but I think it's all with the, the good intentions behind it. And I'm grateful for my, my 14, nearly 14 years here, and you have a wonderful staff that is supporting the planning commission, the city council and all the community. They work very, very hard. I know that we don't always see eye to eye with you on everything, but our intention is to always be unbiased and support the, the direction of the council and the, all of our rules and regulations and there's a great team that's going to carry that on when I leave, but I will be around for a couple more months. I'm not planning on chugging off until October, so you're stuck with me till that long. But anyway, I just want to make a couple of announcements. As has been mentioned already, the planning commission has a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July 29th, to take up the short-term rental ordinance. This is the ordinance that will mimic in very closely the home sharing rules of Santa Monica. In this case, it'll be a hosted short-term rental scheme where the the owner or a designated operator is on the property rather than living in the same unit at the time. This will involve a local coastal program amendment and a zoning text amendment. So it's coming to the planning commission at 6:30 on Wednesday, the 29th. Concurrently, the city council is going to be taking up short-term rental ordinance at their meeting on August 10th. This one is only a zoning text amendment and would put in place some tools for monitoring and enforcement that will help the city's management of short terminals be more effective. And that will stay in place and be superseded by the, if the council adopts it, that would stay in place and be superseded by the ZTA, the home sharing style ordinance, once that gets approved by, and certified by the coastal commission. So that's, it's a little confusing maybe to have two things happening concurrently, but one is to put some rules in place sooner rather than later, and the other is to implement the overall vision of the hosted or home sharing type of rental management. The other interesting project that's coming up in a meeting format is the Trinket Bridge replacement. Caltrans is replacing the nearly 100-year-old bridge of PCH that crosses Trinket Creek. The first stage of that, as far as the city's review goes, the city will be processing a coastal development permit for that, and it will be in front of the environmental review board on Friday, July 31st. This will be another fun Zoom meeting that we're getting so good at. So if you're interested in that project, look for that agenda report to be released sometime next week. The other important thing to know is Um, the other important thing to know is that concurrently with, um, the bridge replacement, the city has worked with trap, with Caltrans to get the long-awaited right turn lane from P C H to Trancas Canyon Road. Um, on the, uh, on the drawing boards also, so that it's a separate project, but, um, one that Caltrans has agreed to work with the city on. So, um, we're very excited about that because it should improve the safety of that, um, intersection a whole lot. Uh, let's see. I'll just add that, um, the planning department continues to offer services, all of our services remotely. And you can, uh, reach any of the planners, um, through their regular phone numbers and email. Um, you can also, if you don't already have a case planner for your project, just contact mplanning@malibucity.org and we will get, um, someone set up to help you with whatever your, um, needs are. And, uh, City Hall is available at a, by appointment only, and that's also through, um, mplanning@malibucity.org. Uh, with that, unless anybody has any other questions, I'll, uh, turn it over back to Chair Jennings.
Uh, John, you have a question?
Yeah, this may be for Trevor, but Trevor, when the, or Bonnie, when the council takes up the interim ordinance, it, it didn't come to us because we've already reviewed it a couple of years ago, I guess. Um, if they change it, does it have to come back to us? Or in other words, if it gets changed, does it get stalled by coming back to us?
I, I, I can figure it out. I mean, it depends on, on what kind of change. I mean, you can make some, some changes to it without having, it would still be in the ambit of, of what was brought up forward previously. Um, they're going to make major changes. I think they already focused on the ordinance that you guys are going to be picking up as the long-term ordinance. So, um, I anticipate whatever they're going to, if, if there's something adopted that it would queue close to this, or otherwise they would just take, pick it up when they pick up the ordinance from you guys.
Now, what happens if, uh, the main ordinance, one we're going to review next week,
Mm-hmm.
never gets approved? Does the interim ordinance last forever? Or is there a consent clause?
No, the ordinance would be adopted here, but be superseded by the ordinance that's being brought forward to the planning commission here. So when that one is certified by the local, by the coastal commission, then it would take the place of the one that's existing.
Yeah, but the question is, they say no, it never happens. Does the interim ordinance just continue or does it sunset?
It would, it would, it would remain in place.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes item, uh, two. And what is it? Never mind. Then we're now at, at the consent calendar. We have, uh, now we have four items on the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? And John?
I'd like to pull three B two for questions.
Anybody else?
Chair Jennings, we had a member of the public interested in, uh, having three A one pulled. I did explain to the gentleman, uh, Philip Gillan, that that's limited to certain, um, uh, restrictions, just as far as whether the resolution, um, matched what, uh, the intent was at the, the meeting. So I don't know if you.
All right, I'm going to, I asked Trevor or sent him an email about this. Trevor, what do you think?
Yeah, if, we, we should let him, uh, speak, you know, um, we can direct him that his comment should be, this, this was something that was debated at the previous hearing. So if he feels that it's not memorializing that decision, if he has comments about that, that should be where he directs it, but we should let him speak.
Okay, so, um, Phil Gillen, are you, I don't see his name up there. There he is down at the bottom. You can unmute him. Mr. Gillen, you're going to have three minutes and, um, I don't know whether you can hear me or not as I speak, but, um, the, the, what you've been advised is correct. The only issue, uh, before us tonight is whether or not the resolution that's presented by staff accurately reflects the action that we took the last time this was before us. Uh, that, that's, that's because the, the action that we took the last time was final. We couldn't change it tonight if we wanted to. Um, however, uh, you have your three minutes and you're ready to go when, whenever you can unmute yourself.
You know, unmuted?
They're going to check, they're going to turn to me.
Can they hear you?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, fellow commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. At the previous hearing, uh, to the proposed water tank installation, several things were stated and they were also stated on information that was sent out. This water tank has been referred to as being on an acre of property. The, the water tank is not on an acre of property. There is only on this site, um, I have to get the exact figures for you, but it's a one quarter of one acre, the size of this property. This is very critical to the fact that a water tank of the size that has been presented to you is being pushed forward onto, and I'm not saying it's going to lay on the street. It's going to be pushed forward onto Bush Drive. That's the whole point of the size of this water tank and what the permitting is asking for. What's happened here is if I can expose some critical errors that occur. So it's not a two-acre property. It's nine thousand seven hundred and eleven square feet. Um, if it was two acres, we, as you know, it would be forty six thousand five hundred times two. Uh, it's not that. Or forty thousand, five sixty, sorry. The situation being that at the back side of this water tank, at some point, uh, after the previous application was filed, either the owner of the site or the water company installed the bathroom on the back of the property without permits and then failed to report the bathroom ins- installation, which then necessitated the position of the proposed water tank to move, be moved forward to Bush Drive. And in addition to that, they have asked you for a 50% reduction of the required front yards setback. Um, if you see documentation that I presented, and I'm sure you, you'd understand the difference between their, what they're asking for, what the size of the tank is and the fact that, um, this water tank will now in most effect, um, hang over a bush drive. And if it doesn't hang over, it's going to actually be right at the tip of Bush Drive to be able to fit onto this property. My concern about this water tank is those errors about the size of the property. And there's another fact. Everything has been talked about here that the address of the property is 5723 Bush Drive. There is no property by the L A County Assessor that recognizes a 5723 address of Bush Drive.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gillen. Your time has expired. Appreciate your comments. Um, we're now back to the, Kathleen, is there anybody else who, who wanted to weigh in on three A, uh, one? As long as we're doing this.
The applicant is available, but I, he wasn't planning to speak unless there was a question to respond to.
Okay, so, uh, we're now at the point where only one item, three B two has been pulled. Can I get a motion on three A one, three B one and three B three?
And move we, uh, file and receive or whatever it's called.
Okay.
File, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, uh, actually we have to have a motion on, um, on, uh, three A one. It, it requires a motion, so.
I'll make a motion to approve three A one.
Okay, and there's a second for that. All right, fine. Uh, and that'll be included within the motion on the remaining items of the, uh, the minutes to receive and file. Three B three is an onsite wastewater treatment system. So if we can have a motion for all of those, uh, we can then move forward. Um, and I'm going to take it that that's what your motion was, Steve.
Yes, I'll make a motion to do what you just said.
Okay, fine.
Approve three A one, three B one and three B three. Is that correct?
Yes.
Kathleen, call the roll, please.
Uh, Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to three B one. Uh, Jessica, I, I assume your picture is up. I'm sorry, three B one. I'm sorry, three B two, three B two. This is John, the one that John pulled.
Well, I just have a question.
Uh, go ahead.
Two questions. One, uh, and I asked Jessica about this today is we don't have a condition in there about following the new restrictions on landscaping. She told me that they haven't been become official yet. But my question is, uh, six months before the lighting conditions came in, we always put a condition in that they must follow it. You know, when it passes, um, so that's, I don't know if we can change the resolution, but I would like to have that in there. Um, my second question is just purely a matter of fire safety. This, this house is, add everything together is fifty nine hundred and forty square feet. And it's got six thousand thirty-two square feet of decks and trellises. And it's in a canyon that just burned. And I'm wondering if there was any comment on safety involved here. This is a huge amount of decks, uh, hanging over a canyon. Um, and is that something we can deal with?
At this point, um, the, the primary, um, review for fire safety is conducted by the fire department, um, for compliance with building codes. And that happens, um, at, at the planning stage, which is where we are with this application right now. Um, they are looking primarily at fire access, fire department access and, um, the fuel modification plans. And then the next stage will be to get into the structural, um, construction documents and things like that for compliance with the fire code. So they'll be looking at that at that time, but, um, planning doesn't, um, necessarily get involved in, in that type of stuff that has to do with fire hardening and structures. Um, it's something that has been discussed about, um, you know, the city and, um, at some point launching a, an effort to have a, an ordinance related to that. But at this point, um, it's not something that, that planning staff, um, applies to the projects.
Well, thank you very much. That answers everything. I move, make a motion to, uh, Stephen file.
Trevor, you want to speak?
Yeah, can we, uh, can we take disclosures and see if we have anyone that wanted to speak on this one since we pulled it?
Sure. Uh, disclosures, John?
Uh, none.
Uh, and Steve?
Done.
David?
Uh, site visit, nothing discussed beyond what's in the report?
Chris?
None.
Okay, Kathleen, is there anybody else who wants to speak on this item?
We just had the applicant if there were questions, so no.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. We're back at the council table. John's made a motion. There's a second to his motion.
I'll second.
We're moving the second there. Kathleen, would you call the roll, please?
The motion was to receive and file, right?
Is it? Oh, sorry. You're right. The motion is to receive and file. We don't even need to, uh, take the roll call.
Good.
Uh, okay, that ta- that concludes the consent calendar. We're now on to item five A. Five A is a condition.
About four A?
I'm sorry, what?
How about four A?
Four A is continued public hearings, isn't it? I don't have a four A.
I don't have a four A.
I'm okay.
Oh, I got one other working from, never mind. Sorry, I apologize.
Sorry.
Five A is conditional use permit twenty dash oh oh two. It's an application to, uh, allow the onsite sale and consumption, uh, to patrons of a bona fide eating place, the real coconut. Who's got this? Lily?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The project before you tonight is a conditional use permit to, uh, allow the onsite sale of alcoholic beverages for previously approved restaurant and authorizing the planning director to submit a letter of public convenience or necessity. The project site is located in the commercial visitor serving zoning district at two, three, four, zero, one Civic Center Way, the Park at Cross Creek Shopping Center. Next slide, please. The approved restaurant is located, um, in the Park at Cross Creek Shopping Center. They're mentioned and is subject to the development standards and permit procedures of the Civic Center Northeast Specific Plan. The specific plan requires a C U P for restaurants with onsite alcohol, alcohol beverage sales and consumption. The Whole Foods Market is permitted to sell alcohol by, by right pursuant to the specific plan and a C U P for alcohol sales for Cafe de Moray was approved last year. So this will be the third business establishment of serving alcohol onsite. Next slide. This is the, um, manorial showing the surrounding, um, uses. Located further to the north is the neighborhood known as Sarah Retreat. And the Malibu Knowles neighborhood consists of six, five residential parcels. Um, Sarah Treat has ninety-six single-family residences. And to the east, west and south, properties are designated for commercial use. The, um, property adjacent to the shopping center is, um, the La Paz site, which is not yet currently, um, which is not yet constructed. The, um, average elevation of the neighborhood of the residential properties to the north are approximately two hundred feet above the flatland below. And as such, this area is susceptible to noise from the commercial area below. Next slide, please. The proposed restaurant would be located at the south end unit in building one of the shopping center in the eastern portion of the site. Next slide. The restaurant includes two thousand one hundred and twenty square feet of indoor space with eight hundred and forty square feet of service area to accommodate forty-two patrons and a six hundred and sixty square foot outdoor patio with seating for thirty-five patrons. The application does not propose any new development or any other operational modifications that would intensify or otherwise change the development or use in the adopted specific plan, including parking requirements. Some general, um, site infrastructure such as circulation, lighting and landscaping is provided according to the C D P that approved the overall project site and the specific plan. Next slide. Alcohol service will be for the consumption, um, of onsite, uh, dining only, including on the outdoor patio. Offsite sales of alcohol associated with ticket orders would not be allowed. The outdoor patio would be open to the public and signage would be posted on the patio to clarify that it is a common use area. These three signs here indicate the signs that will be shown, um, that we displayed on the site and are included in the project plans. Per A B C regulations, the patio exit will be controlled during alcohol service hours to ensure that no open containers are taken off-site. And, um, and additional signage also reminds patrons to respect the residential neighbors to the north and to keep alcohol on site. Next slide. Food service will be provided whenever alcohol service is taking place. And as proposed in conditions, the restaurant does not include amplified or live music. A petition of approval has been included directing the planning department to conduct a review of restaurant operations and compliance with the conditions of approval and to present this report to the planning commission after five years of the C U P approval. This is, um, a similar condition that was also added to the Cafe de Moray C U P at the planning commission hearing. I'll note too that, um, subsequent to the publication of the agenda report, staff is proposing some minor changes to the resolution that would generalize the language in the, um, project description and conditions of approval to not specify the A B C license type. Um, and just to be more general and instead state, um, onsite alcoholic beverage sales as opposed to, for example, onsite beer and wine or, um, or type forty-one alcohol licenses. Uh, next slide, please. Parking spaces for the restaurant would be provided in the common parking area for the Park at Co- Park, for the Park at Cross Creek. Parking spaces for the restaurant would be provided in the common parking area for the Park at Cross Creek. A maximum of four thousand square feet of restaurant space and forty-eight hundred square feet of outdoor seating, both of which are high intensity uses for the purposes of calculating parking demand, have been allowed and considered well balanced for the site. With the inclusion of the real coconut, the remaining square footage for future restaurant use is three hundred and thirty-four square feet. The forty-eight hundred square feet of outdoor dining area has already been constructed. And no additional outdoor seating would be allowed in the shopping center above and beyond what was already approved along with the specific plan. The applicant submitted an application to ABC to permit the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption. The ABC will not issue the license until the proposed CUP is approved. Therefore, a condition of approval has also been included saying that the tenant must submit a copy of the ABC license prior to planning department approval issuance of a certificate of occupancy. A letter of public convenience or necessity will also be required. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the CUP as amended by staff. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Let's do disclosures, please. John? Steve?
Yeah, I drove by the parking lot this morning just to take a look what was going on down there. They've already got a fence built around the area where I guess they're going to have seating. But other than that, nothing new.
Chris, you're muted there.
No disclosures.
David?
I walked by a couple of times.
Okay. All right, is there, are there any public speakers, Kathleen?
We have owners Charles Stewart Gay and Daniela Hunter. They would like to say a few words. And architects Stephen Ocean and applicant Marnie Vandal are available for questions.
Okay, so everybody's on the project team. I'm sorry, John, what was the question?
You might want to disclose for yourself.
I'm sorry?
Do you have any disclosure, Joe?
Oh, no, no, none. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, so we have one project team. That's fifteen minutes for the project team. They can divide it up however they wish. They may preserve whatever time they want for rebuttal if there is any rebuttal. So Kathleen, who, who have we got first? Who wants to speak first?
I believe it would be Charles Stewart Gay.
Okay.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I'm here with my wife, Daniela Hunter.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
We to follow on from what Lily said, which was very clear, we're just incredibly delighted to be able to come in to to Malibu and to continue to support everything that we're doing there. We feel very good about providing beer and wine. The real coconut is considered to be a very healthy brand. We're already in many stores with food products and we're considered to be organic, which will make a a strong direction to our selection of beer and wine. And we feel that corner is, is absolutely superb. You've walked by it. It's, it's got a really, really good feel to it. We're really happy to come in. We're, we've been in Malibu. I have since the early nineties. Between there and Santa Monica. And we're just thrilled to, to bring the real coconut to Malibu.
And just to input a little bit, if any, any of you don't know the concept, it's, as Charlie mentioned, it's, it's a very healthy concept, but it's very unique because we, we don't have any grain, gluten or dairy or refined sugar. So it's an incredibly clean menu and it's been my passion to walk a journey of health. So we're really, we know that Malibu already is, is very in tune with the, the type of food that we're providing and, and and, yeah, we, we, we like to be able to offer a full experience. Obviously, health though is, is the lead for what we're providing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Marnie, I see your sticker up there. Was there anybody else who wishes to speak?
I don't need to speak. I'm just here to answer questions. And Steve Volshen, the architect, is also here to answer any questions.
Okay, fine. Is there anybody else, Kathleen, who is signed in to speak to, to this item?
No, that would be all.
Okay, then that will close the public hearing. We'll come back to the commission table. Who would like to begin? I see David's hand up first.
I, I just have a question for Lily or Bonnie. If I understood Lily, what you were saying, the approval that you're recommending and a, a condition would be not specifying the, the license type for the alcohol to be served currently, but to make it more general. So if that license changes, they don't have to come back to the commission?
That's right. We, the idea is that the use is basically the same onsite sale and service of alcohol to restaurant patrons. And the type of alcohol really isn't much of a land use issue unless the commission had any particular concerns about it. It, it, by being overly specific in the resolution, we have encountered issues where a business owner wants to make a change to their operations and now they have to get in the line for a very long line to get into a public hearing before the, the planning commission for just that issue. And so we're trying to be a little more flexible in that way.
So just to make sure I understand this, so that if, if they were to change to a mixed drink service, they wouldn't be required to come back to us or as long as they're approved by the Alcohol Control Board, that, that does it?
Right. They have to maintain a, you know, a valid alcohol license and it has to, it would just be for on sale, meaning serving onsite, not for takeaway kind of.
Consistent with what we're approving now.
Exactly.
Okay.
Steve, you had your hand up.
Yeah, two questions. The staff report defines this as a common area. What is the definition of a common area?
Being outdoor patio would be open to the public. Don't necessarily need to be a patron of the restaurant to sit in the patio.
Okay, is there going to be a sign that says that, that you do not need to buy any food to sit in the restaurant? Because the signs I see in the back don't say that.
Signs don't.
There's a sign in the back, one of the signs, and I can't tell where this is, you, you can't tell how big it is or where it's going to go. Then it says outdoor patio is, is open to the public. I mean, I would think if that's what, if it's a common area, it should say that you're welcome in. You don't have to buy anything to come in and sit down here, right? That, that, you got a fence around the place.
Is this?
There's a gate. So it's, it's sort of, the, the visual is you're not supposed to come in. If you want to overcome that, yeah, I think you got to be a little more aggressive in saying that. That's just one man's opinion.
John?
Well, when we did the blue bottle, we required them not to have barriers to entry. And so their common seating area doesn't have any barriers to entry. Which is what Steve's talking about. Does, does patio open to the public mean come on in and buy something? Or does it mean you can, you can use it? It's sort of the situation is tradin' on. They put a tablecloth out. You're kind of told, don't come in here. So, you know, I would recommend that, well, number one, there'd be no barriers because this is supposed to be, and the CUP, it was supposed to be an outdoor seating area, not a service area. It was specified as outdoor seating, which is different than service area. So that's part of that question. The other part of that question is on the license. Do we actually say in the resolution, you're proposing that no offsite sales can take place because a forty-two license, like we approved for Fred Segal, is a totally different animal. It's a liquor store. Do we actually say you cannot take it offsite?
Yes, the, the resolution only allows for the onsite sale of alcohol. I'll, I'm checking the conditions now to see if there's an explicit condition for prohibiting offsite.
If I could address the other, a couple of things that were mentioned about the signage. We dealt with the same issues on, I think, the Cafe de Moray's. There is a requirement that areas serving alcohol have to be physically separated. So that's, there, there is a, a need to do that. There were questions about the signage and I, I'm not sure if anyone on the staff is available to check what the language was we decided on or the commission decided on for dealing with the public access to the patio, but we, you did deal with the same issue there. The other thing is the patio seating was always contemplated for restaurant service and a combined kind of restaurant service and, and public seating area. The parking calculations for the overall development take that into consideration that this was, these areas that are designated throughout the shopping center were counted as service area for purposes of the parking calculation. So that's always been part of the, it's part of the plan, in the specific plan that they, they be used in this way.
There, there are details on what this barrier is going to be. Is it going to be walls?
Why don't we ask the architect to, to weigh in on the nature of the barrier? I'm sorry, what was the gentleman's name, Marnie?
Steve Volshen.
Are you there? Are you?
He's listed as in the meeting. He's currently muted.
Can somebody unmute him?
Parker or Alex, can you unmute Mr. Volshen?
I'm trying to, but I don't believe he's actually there because it's, he has to click something.
Okay, Marnie, have you got anything that you can add to the issue?
Could unmute me?
You're unmuted.
You're unmuted.
Thank you. What was it you wanted to ask?
Well, the question has arisen with regard to the nature.
They are planters and the ABC requires a certain height of barrier. This is so people can't reach in and grab a drink off of the table. And that the barriers are required to be of a certain height and a certain proximity to each other. And so they are planters. I believe they're made of wood, but they're going to insert plants in, in between the two planks and have planted barriers.
John?
So can, this is actually for, I guess, Lily. Can we put in in the resolution the maximum life of the barrier? Do we know that number?
It's a, just to, I, I would just point out that it's a condition of the ABC license that it meet their minimum requirements. So I don't know.
That's minimum. I'm worried about maximum.
You don't want it to exceed that.
Whatever the minimum is. This is supposed to be an open area.
The idea, John, would be that the, whatever barriers would be created would be no larger than the minimum required by the ABC. Is that, is that what you're suggesting? Steve?
The barriers are already built. They're there. And it's not a plan or it's a fence. It's got a little box across the top where I guess they're going to put some plants in, but it's done. Just, I mean, so somebody should know how big it is or whatever that process is.
Can we hear something?
I can't hear. Somebody's buzzing.
It's Chris, I think.
Chris, you're sounding.
We're losing you, Chris.
Chris, you're too near something. You gotta.
You have a different microphone, Chris?
Okay, he's working on it. I got one more question. If somebody walks into this restaurant, can they buy a beer and bring it out to the patio where there's a little fence and sit there and drink it?
They would, they would generally be, well.
No, can they or can they not? That's the question.
Yes, if, yes, they, they can purchase a beer onsite and drink it.
Without buying any food?
That would be an ABC license question, but I.
Question of what we say we're going to do for these folks, right? I mean, is our plan to say you can sit down, go into this thing, buy yourself a beer, a glass of wine, or if they start serving hard liquor, get a shot of hard liquor and sit down and drink and not order food? Is that what we want to do?
The, the liquor license is a bona, is a liquor license for a bona fide eating place. So it's, it is an on-sale liquor license. If you want to condition it to.
I'm just asking what we think we're doing. What is, what is the staff recommending we do?
We're recommending that you approve a CUP to allow on-sale, Lily, let's see, where's that language? The onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages to restaurant patrons as ancillary to the approved restaurant use. That's the language. It's from section three on page two of the resolution. So we were proposing to.
I lost you, Bonnie, at the end.
Your, your sound is breaking up now, Bonnie.
I'm not sure what that, it's quiet in my place.
Here's the question. I mean, are, based upon the language I've heard so far, what we're doing is basically setting up a bar. You can go in, order yourself a drink, go sit outside and enjoy yourself. And if that's what the plan is, that's fine, but I, I didn't, I thought this was supposed to be a restaurant that they bought liquor in connection with ordering food.
It's.
I, I could be wrong.
The condition or the, the proposed use is allow onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages to restaurant patrons as ancillary to the approved restaurant use.
I understand, but the question is, what does that mean? Does it mean I can go in, order a shot of scotch, okay? And sit out in the deck and drink it without ordering any food? Is that permitted as part of what we want to do?
I believe.
Sorry, go ahead, Lily.
I, I believe with the, with alcohol license type, they are required to demonstrate that a percentage of their sales is for food and, and not alcohol. And so.
The question.
Your question is on a customer by customer basis.
I mean, am I setting up a bar or a restaurant? That's what I want to know.
This is a, this is a restaurant use. That is what is allowed in the specific plan. It's not intended to be a bar. The license does not address the specificity and, and staff was not proposing to address the specificity that you're talking about on a customer by customer basis. So it would be really hard for us to enforce that. So we weren't proposing that. Your fellow commissioners have the same concern, but we were proposing what I just read as far as the proposed use.
John?
In the past, and I believe it was plate and several other situations like this, we were required that the total sales must be no less than fifty percent food. And that makes it the preponderance of a restaurant. We did that. I know we did that on plate and there were several others we did because they had, I think it was also Malibu Inn, because they had entertainment activities involved. So I think that's a simple solution. To just say, you got to prove every once in a while that you don't sell more than half of your sales as liquor.
Let's see if we can find out from the owners, the applicants as to the nature of their license and what the ABC requires, if they can tell us.
Thank you. Thank you. Listening to you, there's a couple of things. One, with the barrier that's up, there is a, a gate. Just recognize that there's a gate on the outside of the wooden structure that has, will have small planters like herbs and things like that. But there is a gate on the outside. So that's the first thing people will be allowed in and out. And the signs will be clearly written the way they're meant to. We'll take instruction on that. We've obviously followed the guidelines of Lily and Marnie and the ABC license in the construction of that and from the parks themselves. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that we anticipate our numbers being incredibly high in regards to food over alcohol. Incredibly high, so I. Incredibly high, so, uh, I, I hear what you're saying around the fifty percent. Um, you know, we, we're a very unique restaurant in regards to the healthy eating aspect. And we think we're bringing something really sensational to Malibu in regards to healthy food, uh, to the level that we do it. So, uh, the alcohol is a supplement to that.
So, but one, one quick question on that, just to drill in.
Sorry, the third, third aspect is that, that people, uh, seated will be asked whether they want beer or, beer or whether they want alcohol. So people will go to the table. Um, someone said, could they just go in and pour, pour a beer and take it outside? Um, they will be asked whether they want, uh, uh, because it's a restaurant, it's not a bar. The bar is to support the restaurant. Um.
No, it isn't.
And we're also in that, in that area putting more lavatories into the, into the space, which both the park and the development, uh, and ourselves wanted. So we're adding obviously two bathrooms.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and what you have to realize is that we're, we are, uh, putting together a, a, a license in effect that will apply to the space whether you're there or not. So that's the reason why, uh, we have this question being raised. Chris, you had your hand up a minute ago.
Yeah, just, uh, for your current operations, um, what's, do you have a rough sense of what the ratios are now? And would you expect, is it gonna be similar, a similar menu? So at least we'd have kinda your experience on that.
Yes, you can go to Real Coconut, I mean, anyone that wants to research on menus, realcoconutkitchen.com.
Right, I, I'm looking forward to trying to touch, touch it, but I meant more like in terms of your current operations. What are your numbers like? You know, is it about fifty, seventy percent food you said you expect?
It, it would be way, uh, we have a location in Mexico, which actually is a, is a very different structure because it's a full-service restaurant with evenings, sit-down dining. Um, and even here, our alcohol sales are probably around twenty percent of, of our overall food. We're very known for breakfast and brunch and lunch here. Evenings are actually pretty quiet, but because we have a hotel in Mexico and because we're on the beach, it lends itself obviously for people to be able to have a glass of wine or a margarita. And we have very, um, specifically healthful cocktails that we make. But the, the alcohol is, is very much secondary to, to what we do.
Current operation.
People come, people know us for the food.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the drinks, like you said, like fermented drinks.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Uh, I just wondered, uh, as part of this, why you have a, 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 a bar, uh, counter? And why most of your seating is, is a two-person seating? There's only a couple places where it's four and then one table. Are you after the couple seating or after, uh, groups of four?
So, um, regarding the bar structure, that was actually from a space and from the ease of being able to prepare drinks, because we make everything from scratch. So all of our, uh, syrups that we would mix into lemonades, um, all of our, we, we make a lot of drinks and, and juices and things. So, uh, that actual bar space was just to give us extra preparation space as opposed to actually needing a bar. Uh, the seating spaces was more to be flexible so that we could sit and if we wanted to join tables together, they could be moved into a four-top or a two-top. Um, but it, it's not really that we're going for the couples or, or, or groups, it's just more that that was a flexible space plan.
Okay.
Steve?
Uh, yeah, and I, I only drink healthy cocktails, so I understand what you're mixing right there, that's good. Uh, I, I have a question. If, if we were to condition this by saying that you, you had to get food to buy a drink, would you have a problem with that? That's to the owners of this, who were in the audience someplace. Is that, does that cause you any concern?
Not at all, no.
No, not at all.
Cool. Uh, then I, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, unless John went, does John say something first, then I'll come back with a motion?
Well, um, okay, I, I, I would like to amend it if possible, but, uh, well, let me ask one question. Your signs, your signs, the way they're laid out, is the sign that says you, uh, you're, you can enter if you're not a customer, basically. Uh, I'd like to change that sign, but it's on the inside of the building instead of the outside. Now, why would you do that?
You're gonna have to unmute them, Catherine.
That is, uh, actually a question for Steve Olshin. Uh, as owners, we haven't had a meeting on, on where the signs will go. Steve, as an architect and our team have drawn those out. So if there needs to be amendments, we're completely open to that.
Okay, then the second question is, you've got a second entrance, uh, in your main dining area, it goes to the outside. Um, why aren't there any signs there?
Same answer.
Commissioner Mazza, if you would like them to, if you would like to propose, um, sign postings in specific locations, I don't see why that couldn't be included.
Okay, I'll let Steve, I'll, I'll amend his motion then.
Bonnie?
Sorry, I was just gonna say that, um, Richard, um, is aware of some other projects. Um, Commissioner Mazza, like you were referencing where there has been, there have been conditions, um, in, included that deal with food consumption as a part of the alcohol service.
To speak to Commissioner Mazza's point, uh, most recently at the ranch at Solstice, uh, there was a condition placed on it that I, I wanna say was the majority of the receipts, fifty percent, uh, had to reflect the sale of food and that was a way to make sure that it wasn't operating as a bar.
Yeah, and I think Steve was gonna propose, you have to get food.
I've got this too, and I think part of this ties in, you know, I'd like to approve this thing with two items. One, I would like to see a condition that says that you can't get alcohol unless you're buying food. The, you know, the, the, to get a drink, you've gotta have, it's gotta be in conjunction with an order, a food order. And the second thing is, I would like to go to John's issue with proving some signs. I believe there should be an outdoor sign somewhere near where the fence is, so everybody can see it, that basically says you, you, you can come on in, sit down at the, at these, these chairs and you don't have to buy food to be able to do that. You don't have to purchase something from the restaurant to do that. Uh, John?
Yeah, I'll second that with the, uh, proposed amendments that I would like to have, like we've done in other cases, a one-year inspection and a five-year inspection. Because, you know, when it first starts out, you wanna see if it's working right. And then five years later, you wanna see if it's still working right.
Um, that's, that's instead of the five-year.
Oh, wonderful, instead of five, is that acceptable, Steve?
That's fine, I can live with that.
Okay, and then, uh, I wanna make the maximum barrier, the minimum height required by the ABC.
Steve?
I have a problem with that, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I, can.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you say you had no problem with it?
I didn't have a problem with that, I'm not sure what the size is.
Clearly about what that is.
Oh, we, we haven't been able to find an answer, so I'm living up to the ABC requirements.
It's, it's, the, the barriers can be no larger than the, than the, uh, minimum amount required, no, by the.
Or whatever height required by ABC, is that what we're looking for?
It may be no, no higher than the minimum amount.
No higher than the.
You want the minimum barrier, John?
Minimum barrier required the ABC. It was gotta be thirty inches, that's it. You can't grow eight feet of bamboo above it.
So the, the, the barriers surrounding this area shall be, the height shall be no higher than the minimum height required by ABC for those barriers? That's what you're looking for?
Correct.
Correct.
Now, is that, I, I don't know how the city finds that out, but they should find it out. Uh, then on the side.
They can change in, you know.
Yeah, and then on the signs, I'd like to, uh, make the sign A, read outdoor patio is open to the public, no food service required.
Is that what you had in mind, Steve?
I mean, language of that, to that extent is what I'm looking for.
Okay, now, uh.
You mean, no, no purchase necessary?
Well, no, no purchase necessary, you can say that too.
Okay.
Um, now, the other one is, uh, Steve, did you put in a provision on, you have to, you have to have a drink to get, I mean, have to have.
You have, have to have food to get a drink.
Okay, is that in your, your?
Yes, that was my first.
Okay, then on the signs, I would like the, the sign A on, on the outside of any entrance, there's two entrances. As it's proposed now, there's this only a sign on the inside of one of the entrances. So you gotta walk in the restaurant to find out you can walk in the restaurant. Um, so is that acceptable, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, signs on the outside is where they should be.
Of both entrances.
Yeah, fine.
So there, there'd be signs on the outside of both entrances saying no purchase required.
Saying outdoor patio is open to the public, no purchase required.
Okay.
And, um, now, I, I also wanna add, make sure the, uh, provision on, on the ABC license, we have, we have a problem with making the finding that, you know, we're not supposed to have more than five, uh, takeouts. Uh, like we did over at the, uh, the clothing store the other day, uh, what's it called? Whatever, Fred Segal. Okay, so we have to make sure that, that item says no takeout licenses.
It does say.
Yeah, that's, that's in, that's in the report.
Okay, it's already in there, John.
It's in there, John.
So that's, that's our motion.
What a tag team. Uh, Chris?
I would just, um, ask, uh, Commissioner Yearing to consider not just saying that food has to be bought with the alcohol, but that the receipts do for, uh, for non-alcohol beverages at least. Um, for non-alcohol serving, uh, you know, receipts have to be at least half. My concern is like, this, this, um, operator doesn't sound like they wanna do it, but someone could sell really cheap food and a good-sized drink, and then they're meeting your requirement. I'd wanna have it just so the overall receipts, you got more in non-alcohol sales, just for a future operator.
What would you like, language we'd like to have in there then?
Well, I think yours was gonna, you were proposing any alcohol consumption has to be accompanied with, with a food purchase, something like that. And the, um, you know, net receipts or gross receipts have to have at least half of the sales be non-alcohol.
Would that be gross receipts annually?
Um, yeah, I mean, whatever's, I, I don't know if we've had that language before, it sounds like we did in a past case.
We, we have, so I, I will accept that.
Well, you need to have some term, I mean, e- every twenty minutes, every day?
Yeah.
Chris, can we add, you must purchase food to get alcohol service and annual sales may never be less.
Annual sales, okay, good. All right, so let's see if Trevor has gotten this, this put together, unless David has something he wanted to add. David?
I just think we're going overboard, which is not the first time. Um, i- i- if you've got your fifty percent annual sales, if someone wants a beer, making them order food strikes me as ludicrous. I mean, I, we, this is not clearly, it's a health food place and we're concerned that we're turning this into a bar that's gonna be full of people doing nothing but ordering alcohol. I just, I don't see it and I think it's overkill.
Well, the, the point I think Jeff made to one of the speakers earlier is, this goes with the land, not the user.
I understand completely, fifty percent strikes me as fair.
Yeah, and I have a, a one last question of Bonnie, and that is, or maybe the owners, how many other real coconuts are there? Cause they spoke of other, other locations.
Lily, can you address that?
The, the advocate mentioned that they, they have a restaurant in Mexico. I know that there's no other real coconut in, in Malibu, um.
Well, do we have ten worldwide is my question?
Oh, we have. There are fewer than, than ten.
Yeah, we do.
Malibu, Malibu is our first US restaurant. We've turned down spaces in other locations, uh, with other. We were very keen to Malibu be our first location.
Our, our. Our, our retail ordinance is worldwide, not Mal, not US.
I don't remember the, the exact.
This is our second.
Okay, thank you. Trevor? I want you to repeat the motion. You're, you're muted, Trevor. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I believe the, uh, motion is staff's recommendation with the following, uh, additions. There'll be signs at both entrances on the outside that state generally that the, that the area is open to the public and no purchase is necessary to, to enter the space. Number two, um, a one-year review will be added to the condition that has the five-year review. Um, number three, fifty percent of annual sales, uh, must be for food. The next one, food must be ordered in order to purchase alcohol. And then finally, uh, staff's recommendation, is it being adopted? Which would be allowing onsite, um, sale of al- alcohol, not just beer and wine, but they could also get, um, a hard alcohol license as long as it requires, uh, consumption onsite. Does that accurately reflect, reflect the motion in the second?
No, it doesn't. Uh, you left out, the outside barrier may not be no higher than the minimum required by the alcoholic beverages control.
Yes, that's the last, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Okay, you've got that. Um, so Steve, have you been, were you at all persuaded about David's statement that as long as you had the fifty percent, uh, revenue, you, you, there wasn't any point in requiring, uh, that anybody who wanted a beer have to also buy food?
I was not.
Okay, um, so we've got a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Uh, all right, Kathleen, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Yearing?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, cool.
That concludes item five A, we're now on to item five C. Five C is coastal development permit fourteen dash oh fifty-two with a variance nineteen dash oh oh six and a demolition permit. This is an application for interior and exterior remodel of the, um, property at two zero zero four eight Pacific Coast Highway. And did he, eh?
Good evening, Chair Jennings. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. And the next item on the agenda is coastal development permit number fourteen dash zero five two, including variance number nineteen dash zero zero six and demolition permit number nineteen dash zero zero six for a project located at two zero zero four eight PCH. Next slide, please. The property is located on the water side of PCH in the single family, in the single-family medium zoning district and is approximately point eight acres in size. Next slide, please. The proposed couple work includes an interior, exterior remodel after the fact approval of a sixty-square-foot first-floor addition, a one hundred and ten-square-foot second-floor addition, emergency underpinning of existing concrete seawall and existing permanent pad footings, construction of a one hundred and thirty-nine-square-foot second-floor addition, a thirty-nine-square-foot second-floor deck extension and OWTS components consisting of a treatment tank system and a feature one hundred percent expansion field. The project also consists of a variance request to allow for the after-the-fact approval of existing unpermitted additions to the first and second floor located within required east side yard setback. A demolition permit for the demolition of forty-two point three percent of exterior walls, a hundred and thirty-four linear feet of the existing single-family residence and demolition of an existing twenty-three-square-foot unpermitted first-floor deck built seaward of the existing deck string line. Next slide, please. Here we have the existing floor on, on the left side of your screen and the proposed lower floor on the, uh, right side of your screen. Here you can see that they're proposing the interior remodel, they're also proposing, as you can see in the bottom, let me just minimize this, cause it's in my way, okay? On the left you have the proposed, the existing lower floor, and on the right you have the proposed. They are going to eliminate an unpermitted first floor deck which was built seaward of the existing deck string line, and you can see to the right at the bottom, they have a portion that they're cutting off, it's a little triangular area. They, they also have the addition that was added to the east side by previous property owners in the nineteen eighties, which lines up closely with the original east side yard set, setback of the home's second floor, which is two feet, three inches. You have that unpermitted area highlighted in, in gray and is pointed as unpermitted area, and on the right you have the same area and it's itemized as to be legalized. And again, this is an existing sixty square foot addition that is well, that is below the second floor area within the previously approved side yard setback. Next slide please. Here we have the second floor, to the left you have the existing and to the right you have the proposed. Again, they're doing an interior remodel to this area, they also have a one hundred and thirty-nine square foot proposed new addition. If you see the, the slide on the left side, what they're infilling as a hundred and thirty-nine square feet was previously used as decking, so they're gonna infill that. They're also proposing a thirty-nine square foot deck extension. And that is highlighted in this tan color on the right side. And they're also trying to legalize this one hundred and ten square foot addition again that was previously built sometime in the eighties by previous property owners. The additions added to the east side by a previous owner in the nineteen eighties line up closely with the original east side yard setback of the home's second floor, which is two feet, three inches, except that on the second floor, the addition goes four inches further into the setback. And you can see that it just kind of, it just has these four inches that pops out, if you look at the gray area on the right side of your screen, it basically just wall thickness that encroaches further into the setback, next slide please. In summary, staff recommends that planning commission adopt resolution number twenty dash five two approving the proposed project as condition. This concludes my presentation, the applicant and staff are available for any questions you may, you may have. Additionally, our coastal engineer, Mike Phipps, is also available, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, also, I wanted to compliment you on this written staff report, you laid out the, the various items of the the ordinance that we had to consider in the footnotes and I find that very helpful, so it's not to have to dig around for those of us who haven't memorized the LCP and the zoning ordinance. Are there any ex parte communication disclosures, David, let's start with you.
I went to the site, met with the architect, did not discuss anything that isn't reflected in the report here. But I, this is a project that I think you have to see to really get a sense of how how much work needs to be done to, to put this into livable condition, it's I think they said there was a homeless person who had lived there and started a fire on part of the property and other parts of it. Were just falling apart, and the fact that someone's willing to come in and try to do all of this, I compliment them on that.
Steve?
Uh, yeah, I visited the property with Commissioner Mazza, we met with the architect. Uh, I think David's correct, I don't think the staff report has got the words to describe the condition this property is in at the moment. And it was just, you know, and I, I'm not a, a construction person, but boy, when you, when you walk around the place and you knock on the walls and you see the dry rot that just keeps coming up, I, you know, my sense is there, the, the chances they're gonna be able to keep fifty percent of the walls up in this place, and that's gonna be one hell of a challenge, that's, that's all I know.
Chris?
Uh, no disclosures.
John?
Yeah, I went with Steve and met with the architect and one other guy, maybe the contractor. We walked around, what I did learn is, what Dave and Steve learned, it is in horrible condition. Uh, I did notice, which isn't in the staff report, that some of the floors and ceilings are made of, the beams are sistered together, which I know isn't code, so uh, that's a question I will have later on whether or not it's safe, but yes. And I did notice, I also noticed which wasn't in the staff report, there's a stairway onto the beach of poured cement. And the seawall that was added looks newer than the staff report, reports.
Okay, I have none, Chris, did I ask you?
Yeah, you did ask.
Okay, alright, so let's open the public hearing, Kathleen, who have we got?
We have the applicant team, they're available for questions. They consist of project manager Nick Barzakini, owner John Waters, I'm sorry, Joseph Waters, structural and coastal engineer uh, David Weiss and Ray Files, who is, I believe, the contractor.
Okay, so they're just here for questions, they have a presentation they'd like to make?
They do not.
They do not.
Just for questions.
Is there anybody else in the, who signed up to speak on this item?
No, there is not.
Okay. Uh, then we'll close the public hearing, we'll come back to the commission table and you can ask questions of the applicant and his team if you wish. Who would like to start, John, you said you had some questions, why don't you?
I have, I have questions of David Weiss. You were just introduced as a structural engineer. And you know, I've built a couple houses in my life, but not, not proud of it. I noticed there's a lot of sistering and a lot of what looked like later shoring up and replaced whole areas of ceilings. It is, in general, has anybody done a structural analysis to see if this property is safe? Or engineered properly, I'll put it that way.
Kathleen, you're gonna have to unmute David Weiss, is that, is that who we're talking about?
Yes.
I'm giving it a try, he doesn't seem to be, and he has to click a thing to let me unmute him. There he goes.
There he goes, he clicked the thing, good for you.
All right, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work to be done, but we've analyzed everything and we're gonna make changes to things that have to be changed, it's that simple. One of the problems that makes the place look so torn up is for years and years and years and years, there was a lot of stuff that just got added to the floors, I mean, there was concrete on top of wood and bricks on top of the concrete and stuff like that. And all of that stuff has been taken off and the building is considerably lighter now than it was. And we'll, and we're taking care of all the things that have to be, that should have to be changed, we've done an analysis of floor drapes, we've done an analysis of the beams and, and it's gonna be taken care of.
Okay, could you comment on the seawall? And about when that was constructed and is it a repair or is it a new seawall?
No, the sea, the seawall is, the seawall has been there for, lack of a better term, for a long, long time. What happened is we underpinned the seawall. What had happened is the sand got washed out from underneath the, the seawall and the building started to tip forward. And we underpinned it, we underpinned that building down to the bedrock, the underpinnings are, I would say a good seven to eight feet down below the bottom of the existing seawall. It was quite a job.
Yeah, it looks like it, now, the stairway is, does that, that looks much newer than the seawall, is that correct?
I, I, I don't know anything about the stairway, I mean, you know, I it kind of in my mind has always been there, and I, I really don't know the history of it.
Okay, and then as part of the OWTS uh, discussion, they mentioned that expansion has to be allowed done, other than just putting in the tank. Uh, and then they mentioned that the pilings for the building have to be replaced. How are you gonna lift the building up and put new pilings in?
Well, there's, there's the foundation that is there now is stable, when that tank was built and the footing pads that are underneath the house that are adjacent to that tank, the walls of the tank were designed to take the load or if there is any surcharge from those footings. So that tank was not just put in with, with the footings in the way, that was all, that was all planned.
So, are you gonna have to jack the house up and put in new, new footings or what happens?
No, 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 we don't, for what we're doing here, we will not have to.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else would like to weigh in? Steve?
The only thought I have is, you know, and I'm not sure how to, I, I guess there's inspections that take place. If someone's got, should go and really make sure we're taking a look at this thing as it's getting built, because like we mentioned earlier, it's in really bad shape right now, and there's a ton of work that has to be done. And just want to make sure it's done right.
Okay, can we get a motion perhaps?
I have another question if I could, of Didier. Didier, you, you, you justify a lot of your variances on the fact that the, the similar houses in the area have those kind of variances. But, and just walking back to my car, I looked around and I didn't see anybody who had additions that were a foot away from a foot away from the house next door and I looked down the beach when I was down there and I didn't see anybody who had a unpermitted seawall or permitted seawall, whatever you want to call it. Seaward of the, the string line. And the coastal regulations don't allow that, so we need that variance to approve this. Are there any houses in the neighborhood that have a seawall seaward of the string line?
Thank you, John, I'm gonna have to defer this question to perhaps Richard, who would be more familiar with the neighborhood than I am.
Okay. So, before Richard, you're, you're muted, Richard, you have to unmute yourself. But before you do, my understanding is the only variance is the variance for that, that four inch intrusion into the, into the side yard.
That is correct, that's correct.
Okay. Richard, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, and Mike Phipps can jump in and help me with this as well, just to say in the right thing. And, but the seawall in this case, a lot of this work is already existing. That wall and also, I believe David knows the history. But if this were to be a new seawall, new development, then John is, Commissioner Mazza is correct. And new development would definitely have such a variance, but as the chair pointed out, the variance is that when variance associated with the project, it's focused on the side yard and to provide a mechanism to legalize the additions that this owner unwilling, unknowingly purchased.
Well, can I ask you a question, Richard, a lot of the staff report says it was before the city or mid-eighties or whatever, but the coastal commission preceded that by minimum ten years. And they are required, they required permits, which were never gotten. So just because the city came along in ninety-three, are all prior sins and non-permits void? Because I don't think that's the way the law reads. So this is a new permit for seawall if it never got one. Or, or an intrusion into the side yard, it never got one. Because it was done after the coastal commission came along.
Exactly, on the additions to the side yard, they are being treated as new development and there is no grandfathering, that's why we included the variance for the planning commission to be able to approve those as new development. And, and since they don't comply with today's standards, that the variance gives us that mechanism. And I believe though the seawall, that's a different situation, I don't believe that that was an unpermitted structure.
And the stairs? Do you think there's somebody gave a permit for that, that, that seawall? A new sea, the, the, under, whatever they call it, the addition to the seawall, because coastal act says you can't repair.
The underpinning, and David Weiss can describe this in a bit more detail, took place behind the seawall, I believe, there was concrete that was poured from behind it.
Well, when you look at the plans, it looks like it was poured on top of. But, I know, but the same thing applies to the variance on the side of the house. You know, I asked the architect or, you know, is this house on the other property, when I looked down that sidewall, I couldn't see any, any daylight to the ocean at all, now you're saying it's a foot, but it's.
It's four inches.
Four inches, okay. How do we approve that when there isn't the relief of this being given to other neighbors or adjacent houses? It's just, oh, it's, it's too bad, we want to leave it there, we have to have a reason to make the finding that it was uh, given to other people. How do we get around that?
I would, Didier, can you clarify? The addition that would be authorized under this variance encroaches four inches further into the setback, but how far from the property line will the building be?
It would be about a foot and eleven inches.
So it's still a small setback, it's almost, it will, the resulting setback will be um, almost two feet and a foot and eleven.
It was a requirement's three, so we're, we're two thirds off.
Right, but the, the basis for the variance has to do with the existing, the pre-existing structure that was lawfully established, that has virtually the same setback that is below this floor, is that, that's correct, right, Didier?
That is correct.
Yes, this, this addition was done without a permit and it, it hangs over four extra inches compared to the lower floor, but that was the reason that we felt like um, this owner, it, it could be justified to be there because it wasn't making the situation any worse, given the lower floors pre-existence.
What you're saying is, it got built when there were no requirements in nineteen thirty-eight. And therefore, you can waive the requirements that came in in nineteen seventy-three. Uh, and that doesn't quite make sense.
There's also the point that it wouldn't do anybody any good to, to get rid of that four inches, it would accomplish no public purpose.
Well, the public purpose is, is, number one, whatever side, whatever side yard setback you have for view corridor, and number two, how are you gonna put that house out if it catches on fire? You can't spray water in four inches. So it's a safety issue also.
That four inches will make all the difference with the fire comes.
On four, four inches, it's two feet.
Bonnie?
I was just gonna also point you to figure one in the staff report that's on page two, that overview of the project site outlined in green and the houses that are nearest, up coast and down coast, and you can, you know, this aerial doesn't give you a crystal clear view, but you can see that the development pattern in this area is very close together. I have to assume that all of these homes were probably built under, built long ago or under, you know, obsolete standards if there were any setback standards at all, so in terms of the other homes that have the same, same sort of side yard setbacks, this is the, this gives you some idea of where we were drawing that conclusion from.
Is someone able to research two zero one two four, because that looks like just from the those coastal images, you know, the historic files, that looks similar just on the imagery there. I don't know if I could bring that up on the spot, but I mean, it looks like it's, it's almost overhanging the neighbor's roof, it, it looks like a parallel situation.
But it's not asking for, it's not asking for anything. It exists, the last question I have, and, and I have a lot of reservations about just saying, oh, they cheated in the past, let them do it now, is this is identified as being in the toe of the landslide. As a geologist, other than the city geologist, said this thing isn't going to slide since it's got a nineteen thirty-eight foundation on it?
Do we have anyone from the applicant team that wants to, well, I guess David Weiss could speak to the structural engineering of the project. I don't know if we have a chief of technical person from that team that, that can speak to this, but like other projects that have come before you that are existing homes that are being remodeled or an addition or whatever, the property owner has to accept the hazard of the landslide location as part of the, as a condition of the project. That's a de restriction or an assumption of risk that is a standard condition of the existing circumstances of the property. But I would defer to David Weiss or anybody else on the team to address your questions about how the structural engineering has been done on this property.
Can somebody unmute him?
I think Mr. Weiss just unmuted. Go ahead, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, as far, as far as the landslide, it's just a very deep landslide. And all those houses in that area or all the buildings in that area on top of it. Now, there's no evidence that that slide has been moving in regard to these houses at all. The, I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but the few, the few conversations I've had with the geotechnical engineer was if the landslide moved, this house is going to sled on the landslide. The landslide plane does not go through the foundation of this building. Therefore, it's not going to tear the building apart. As I said, there's no evidence that there's been any movement in all these years.
Okay. Then I have a last question and I, it can be the Richard or Bonnie or Trevor. The coastal commission has a standard of a hundred year life on buildings. Okay, this one has twelve years to go on that hundred years. Does that have any bearing on the fact that we're extending the life of a hundred, seventy, eighty-eight year old building beyond a hundred year life? In a remodel?
The coastal commis, the standard that's in the LCP is, it's in the, I believe in the hazard section and probably also in the shoreline and bluff development standards talks about an assumption of a hundred year lifespan for new development, but I don't, I'd have to look it up, but I don't believe it speaks to a situation where you're remodeling a building. It doesn't speak to that specifically, but the fifty percent rule in terms of exterior walls is laid out in the LCP as a, a way to deal with that issue. If you're, you know, demolishing more than fifty percent of the structure, then it would be deemed a new structure and then you have to meet all the current standards. And that's where your studies and assumptions would have to take that hundred year lifespan into account. Here they are threading a needle in terms of maintaining fifty percent of the existing structure in order to remodel it and, and fix the underpinning and, and the septic system and things like that. And it will certainly extend the life of the structure, but as long as they stay within that fifty percent threshold that, that's what they're allowed to do under the code. They were reviewed by the plan check engineers on two different occasions to check carefully for the fifty percent rule. It is a very old structure and if in the process of doing the project, it the, the thresholds are exceeded, then they're, they're going to be back before you with you know, having to amend their CDP. It's, it's definitely a, a difficult project, but that's the nature of it and so.
Just a second. David, you had your hand up?
Oh, I'm, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Well, let's, let's, let's see what John has to say. Go ahead, John. Your, your last question you asked.
Well, it is. Since this is so touchy on the fifty percent rule. Can we put in a provision that somebody from the planning department actually goes and inspects the property before it's cheated, resheded? The, the, my experience is the inspectors kind of are interested in different thing.
They are, our current building safety, building official and the inspection team is very detail oriented and, but I, I don't see any problem with including a condition for a planning inspection somewhere at some interval that would make sense.
Okay.
Okay, David, you had your hand up. You want to make, you go ahead. A motion you want to make?
With John's amendment incorporated in the conditions, I'd like to move that we adopt the coastal permit, the variance and the demolition permit specified in the staff report.
That's staff recommendation with a requirement that the planning department inspect the project. At, at what point do we want the?
Prior to being reshaved.
Okay, is that specific enough, Bonnie?
You think so, Richard? Or do you have any different language in mind?
What we've done in the past was we've just simply stated upon completion of demolition activities, the applicant shall request an inspection by the planning department.
That's good.
Excellent.
Yep.
With that, I'll, I'll second David's recommendation or David, David's motion. And I wish the guy that owns this place the best of luck.
Right. All right. So Kathleen, we've got moved and seconded Kathleen. There's, if there's no further discussion, Kathleen, there's your wireman on her. You want to call the role, please?
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Tar Mazza?
No, I can't make the findings on prior.
Okay, Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda for this evening, I think. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Adios, guys.
Good night.